If you all stand with me for the pledge of allegiance, then remain standing and we'll have an invocation by Jim Jenkins from the BFW.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that's great. Heavenly Father, we just hum ourself before you at this time, thanking you for who you are. We thank you for your love. We thank you for your watch over each one of us. We thank you for this time that we can come together to discuss the business of the city. I just pray that you give the leaders guidance, direction, give them wisdom, and above all that there'll be just a willingness to listen to one another, just to be a peaceful dissertation, and that your perfect will will be accomplished. So direct us this evening in our thoughts, and we give you all the praise in your glorious name. Amen.
Jim? First up, we have a proclamation. BPW, proclamation for the BPW, Bonner Springs. And would you like just to introduce everybody real quickly that's going to be up here?
Well, we have City Councilman Chris Wood.
Come on up here ladies.
Steph Berzer, Linda, Lynn Kugel, Janine Gallagher, and myself, Susan Roberts.
And then Danny Gurley from the City Council. Come on up here, Janine. We also got to make a little mention, because I understand that you've decided to slow down a little bit. That's like trying to rabbit to slow down to a, what, a, you know, like a raccoon's pace or something, or a turtle. You're still going to be working, I know you. Janine was born on August 6th at Bethany Hospital to parents Ruth and Edward Garrett. Janine's mother, Ruth, traveled to Bonner Springs in a covered wagon from Medicine Lodge and graduated from Bonner Springs High School. Janine's father, Edward, was born the youngest of eight children in Oklahoma, Shawnee Cherokee Territory. Janine attended school through eighth grade across the river in Walter, Kansas, before her family moved to Bonner Springs. She attended Bonner Springs High School where she was the head drunk majorette. She met Clifford Gallagher, a fellow student, and they married on October 14th prior to his deployment for the Korean conflict. Janine and Clifford had one child, daughter Debbie Berzer. Janine was the child of a farmer, worked for TWA. I think you were an airline pilot, weren't you? Was an accountant for a bread manufacturing plant, bookkeeper for USD 204, and sold Mary Kay Cosmennings. Janine has spent a significant amount of time in her life volunteering and making a difference in others' lives. She volunteered at the United Methodist Church as kindergarten teacher, in the bell choir as church treasurer, and served on the church budget and finance board. She was a member of the Von Trent Community Services Board, the Von Trent Christmas Basket Chair. She served on the Business and Professional Women's BPW Bonner Springs Board and was elected to officer positions including local presidents several times. She was the BPW of Kansas ID winner. She was selected to receive the Mary Vaughan Award. She prepares food on Thursday nights for her feed-hist lambs. She is a Bonner Springs High School alumni recipient, serves on the Bonner Springs Historical Society, a 2019 Von Trent Annual Meeting Christmas Basket Volunteer Award recipient. And that is just a small listing of what this lady has contributed to this community. So she has been one of our favorite ladies here in town. Whereas women constitute over 72 million, or almost half of the nation's workforce, and strive to serve their communities, their states, and their nation in professional, civic, and cultural capacities, and whereas women own businesses account for 30% of all US businesses, generating $1.9 trillion in sales and employing 9.2 million people, and whereas working women should be applauded for their contributions to the workplace and the financial stability of their families, especially during the economic downturn, when more women have become their family's breadwinner, and whereas the major goal of the Business and Professional Women's Foundation is to promote equity for all women and to help create better conditions for working women through the study and advocacy of social, educational, and economic issues impacting women in the workplace, and whereas since 1928, National Business Women's Week has honored the contributions of working women and employers who support working women and their families, and whereas the City of Bonner Springs is supportive of the endeavors of the local organization founded in 1945, now therefore Jeff Harrington, Mayor of the City of Bonner Springs, Kansas, does hereby proclaim the week of October 20th through October 26th, 2019 as National Business Women's Week. And we urge all citizens, civic, and fraternal groups, educational associations, news media, and other community organizations to join this salute to women and encourage and promote the celebration of their achievements as they contribute daily to our economic, civic, and cultural purposes. There you go. I'll hand that to you, Janine.
Thank you.
As you might have guessed, the mayor's not available this evening, so please be kind to me tonight, as I work my way through this. So first thing up is the consent agenda. We include the minutes, oh, sorry, my apologies, thank you very much. We have citizens' concerns. Is there anybody who would like to speak on any subject that is not on tonight's agenda? Let me kind of read this real quickly. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the mayor and city council on the record in the open public meeting. No immediate action will be taken on these issues in the interest of fair and transparent city government. All issues will be investigated, researched, or addressed as necessary, and with consensus of the city council placed on a future agenda. Is there anybody who would like to please step up to the podium and give your name and address?
Dylan, mother. We have a group.
So we probably just go with your name and address.
Why don't you go in here as first, and I'll begin mine?
My name's Dylan Woods. My address is 2309 Anderson Road, Lawrence, Kansas. But I'm the Executive Director of Von Trent Community Services down the street here in Bonner.
I'm Debbie Berzer, and Gallagher Berzer. That is my mother. I'm going to be chairing the Christmas basket starting this year. My mother has done it for 50 years. So I said, do you think maybe, you know, you're going to heaven, we figured, so do you think maybe somebody else could get in? Anyway, I'm just kidding. Anyway, quite, anyway, I'm just kidding. But anyway, she's been doing it for 50 years, like I said, so she's still going to be there with us and helping and doing stuff, but I thought, well, it's time maybe somebody else takes the reins a little bit. So one of the things that we were going to tell you was, first of all, thank you for everything this city in Edwardsville. And it's USD 204 boundaries is what is involved in the Christmas baskets in Von Trent. So thank everyone for all that you do and you donate. This year, following the mayor's Christmas tree lighting and the candy cane parade, on Monday, December the 1st, will be the first day that the Von Trent Christmas baskets will begin. It'll, December the 9th, Monday. They'll be in the basement of First Christian Church as always, and it starts at 9 o'clock, 9:30, until about noon. And the same thing happens on the 10th through 11th, Tuesday and Wednesday. Those two days, we have the fourth graders from Edwardsville and Bonner take turns having, and then they sort food and put them into the boxes that go out. Then Thursday, the 12th of this year, will be when they are distributed to those who are less fortunate than others. And one of the things we have is the board members. I'm not a board member. My mother is the board member, Chris Wood is a board member. But one of the things that some of the board members do is they provide chili. And it used to be that people in the town would come and have chili on that day, and for lunch, and visit, and watch the interaction, and how it all has processed. Because the school kids come from the high school, and the Sacred Heart kids come from over there, they're junior high kids, and they help put, carry these baskets, because by the time you get all these cans and the food items in it, they are, they do get very heavy. They're a banana box, half a banana box. And it is such a joy to see that the basic necessity of life can bring tears to some people's eyes, be what it might. So we would love for you to feel, please feel free, if you can, to come and have a bowl of chili with us and break bread with us, bread crackers, or whatever, on that Thursday. And we'll probably start at about 9:30 and end about 1:00 or 1:30, somewhere in there. And the park's in wreck, thank you gosh, thank you guys, and thank God. They're going to allow us to use their bus this year, because the Tiddler cans can't. They deliver to the three high rises, of course, that's the first thing we do. So anyway, thank you for that. Go ahead. You have your man.
Yeah, and then another thing we're doing is we're simply just trying to promote the program so that, you know, so folks are aware of it. But one thing we've done is we've approached USD 204 in the City of Edwardsville about putting up a banner that we designed on the website, just kind of get the word out a little bit. So I did want to leave this with you guys and see how possibly we can make that happen.
And maybe, maybe put a running blurb on the, that, yeah, the message, that digital message board out there or something, and letting them know the week of when it's going on and stuff, I don't know, but somehow we'll sum that out. So are there any questions or anything that may be from us? Thank you.
Well, I will say this, when you say you've got just a picture, is that in actual just a picture of a bigger banner, or?
Oh, no, no.
Are you talking about banner for, like a?
A digital banner, yeah.
Make sure, please make sure that Christina has that, Christine Brave has that. She would make sure it's possibly, you know, in our, you know, electronic newsletter that goes out.
Great. Thank you very much.
And wish you for all, any of, in all donations, food donations, dry or canned, in any way.
Thank you very much, Dan. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Name is Kevin Zimmerly, live here in Bonner Springs, up on Stillwell Road, 13917. Had a issue a few weeks ago. I have worked my way up through talking to people at the front desk upstairs, all the way up as high as I felt I could go, so I'm going to talk to you guys. First off, I have a question for you guys. Have you ever replaced an outlet in your house? Have you replaced a, a light switch, things like that? Have you ever had a leaking faucet that you fixed? Has anybody had any of those? Did you get a building permit?
Some situations, yes, but normally no, I don't think you need to.
For a leak? Okay. I had a, okay, I had a water line break outside my house. I tried to get, I know from prior experience, they have a form you fill out, they kind of knock off a little bit off your water bill to help you out. This happened a couple of years ago. I filled the form, I brought it in, third minutes later they came, called me, says, it's all been taken care of, or the, they knocked off like 20 or 30%, I can't do it, percentage gist. So I had another water line break. I came up here, talked to the lady at the front desk, we don't do that. So I knew they did, but I had to get my water line fixed, so I went and got it fixed. So I came back after it was fixed, talked to another lady, yes, we can do that, fill out the forms. I handed over to her at that point. I said, thank you. Called me a few minutes, a few days later, and said, you didn't give us the bill to prove that a licensed plumber did it. No problem, I brought that up. They said, give us a little time, we'll call you with an answer. Then I get a call a few days later, it says, well, you didn't get a permit to fix that water line break. I wasn't told I needed one. I was up there twice, nobody told me. So I came back up to talk to them, they said, well, lady that I need to talk to is on vacation, so I came up today. She said, well, you had to have a permit. Well, we talked a little bit, didn't like her answer, I'll be honest, I didn't. So they brought another gentleman up to me, from like the planning commission, I believe. And I was told that if you do any kind of changes or modifications, you have to have a building permit. My theory was, I fixed the water line break, I did not change anything. It still goes from point A to point B, it did not deviate anywhere, all I did was, we fixed it right there. It wasn't modified anywhere. So I said, well, what if the water line was inside? We should have to have it. I had a question specifically, what if it's just an outlet's bad? You have to have a building permit, $100 for a $2 light switch. Makes absolutely no sense to me. People here just admitted, y'all didn't get one? So does that, does that mean every time you do that, you have to go up here and pay them $100 for every single thing you've done to your house?
For pipe or electric, I guess. No, but.
So I was told it's building codes. You know, I can understand if you were actually changing something, upgrading electrical, but something simple as changing an outlet, that is, to me, is an honor system, which nobody is going to do. To me, it's, you know, I just don't understand it. I mean, it's a waste of my time, it's a waste of city's time. If a licensed plumber has done it, it has been done, should have been done correctly. I don't see why I have to pay $100 to have somebody come out and tell me. And then my plumbers will charge me more because they're going to have to leave that thing trashed, come back another time, bring their equipment back out again, now my price would be getting double. I got to pay a lot already to have the thing fixed to begin with. So I'm, I'm reach your attention, hoping maybe y'all can help do something, somebody explaining to me how that makes sense, why I should have to pay $100, especially with just a little, a little turnoff valve, understeak, why I have to get a permit for that.
Let me do this, let me, I will discuss with staff, we'll talk to staff about it, get as much detail as we can to find out, is there an issue with doing project work inside, such like you said, fixing a leaky faucet, fix, repairing an outlet versus doing a major construction of a pipeline outside where you have to dig a trench? So let me talk to staff, find out, get all the facts and all the story together before I really comment or have anybody comment on that. That could be the good, smart thing to do. And then either myself, staff, or when the mayor returns, one of us will give you a call back.
Okay. And we, I would like an explanation, if you say that is the way it is, explain to me why.
Yeah, we will.
That's why I like that, it makes no sense.
I understand.
Okay. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Okay. Anyone else who would like to speak, address the council? If not, we'll go ahead and move on with the consent agenda. The consent agenda involves the minutes of September 23rd, 2019 city council meeting, claims for city operations, claims for a public housing authority, appointments to boards and commissions, and a massage therapy business establishment and massage therapist license renewal for back and body massage. Does staff wish to poll anything? Does anybody from the audience wish to poll anything? Council, do you wish to poll anything?
Item number four.
You'd like to poll number four, do you have just a question, or you'd like to actually poll it? Have a fair discussion.
I'd like to poll everybody.
Okay, so we're going to poll number four. So we'll have items one, two, three, and five. So we're polling appointments to boards and commissions. Anything else that council would like to poll? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I am going to accept the consent agenda, plus item number four, as presented.
Move in second. Any, we don't have discussion, any additional questions on it? Roll call. Just break.
Ken?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number four of the consent agenda, appointments to boards and commissions. We had two appointments, one for the Board of Zoning Appeals for Larry Clark, and one for the Library Board for Hortensia Dominique. Does staff need to comment on anything, anybody from the audience? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to table board for appointments to boards and commissions until January.
As fair as possible. Second, if seen as second, that motion fails, I will accept another motion.
I'm curious as to what's happening here.
Well, we'll have, with table item, we can't discuss, but if we have a regular motion, either for or to reject, we can then have a discussion. So anybody want to make a motion, one way or the other, for item number four?
Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the appointments of Larry Clark to the Board of Zoning Appeals and Hortensia Dominique to the Library Board, as presented.
Do we have second?
Second.
Move in second. Discussion will start, well, actually, I'll start with you, Mr. Mackey, since you have the issue and you had a poll.
I wanted to do a little more research on BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals, is a, basically, one of the most powerful commissions we have in the city, from non-elected officials. And I just wanted to do a little bit of a discovery process and figure out who it is we're appointing to the board before we put somebody in for two, three years, I'm not certain what the commission is. And we do have an election coming up, so I was curious to see the results of that before we fill up all of our appointments.
Okay, any other comments? Roger? Mr. Shannon?
Roger.
Mr. Thompson?
Who do the recommendations come from for this position?
Okay, the normal recommendations would actually be, they're mayor appointments. He would look usually towards the planning department and the planner themselves to, I believe that would be correct. He would look to the planner for information on the candidate that is being placed up there for the position. And then the mayor would actually do his research and make sure he under, fully understands. Like I said, it is a mayor's appointment, it, our position is only to determine if we feel that position should or shouldn't be approved or not.
So it's vetted by multiple people before it reaches the mayor for a recommendation to us?
That would be correct.
Thank you.
That's city staff and?
City staff.
And the commission itself, they recommend somebody?
I don't know for this particular one, the planning commission, it doesn't come from them. I think with regard to the library board, it does. So there's, there's different procedures depending on what committee or commission it is.
When has Larry Clark done? I'm sorry, Craig, Steve?
He, that is a position that's already been vacated, so Larry was actually appointed by the city council, the last council meeting to fill a planning commission.
And then he's, they've had one meeting, I think it was just a kind of, a very small agenda, not really anything active on it, but, so he has had some, has bit to speak to at least one commission meeting.
Is there a pro or con waiting to get more information? Or?
Yes.
Is there a pro or con to waiting? I mean, is there, is there something on the docket, or this needs to be done right away?
With the BZA, it's a five-member board, so if something comes before them, you'd only have four members that are able to vote.
And really, there's no way of knowing whether something is coming from the board ahead of time, it's?
Right, it's, it's application-based, they don't meet unless they need to, unless an application comes in.
So Larry Clark got vetted by these groups, and they are suggesting unanimously?
He was one of.
That's the way I understand it.
There were three vacated positions and three new members on the planning commission. Of those, we asked if they were interested in serving on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Two of them submitted their interest, as well as their applications to the mayor, who then chose between the two.
Sorry, no, I purposely, out of protest, was not at the meeting when the appointments were done, that's why I was not here the first time, and I, this isn't anything against Larry, it was just, I never, I got familiar with the people that were appointed, and I would like to do more research on some commissions that are getting ready to decide a major project that will literally double the size of our city. I think we should have local people that were aware of doing it, and do some thorough research, and just allow Bonner Springs and the citizens to know in a transparent way what we're doing. That's all my comments left.
Go ahead, did you, would you like to say something?
No more questions.
I will say, this, Mr. Clark would be a resident of our city. He's not an outsider.
Yeah.
He is a resident of the city. And it has been a policy, I think, to the planning and zoning, the appeals board, has been, the positions have been filled from within the planning commission. I think that started about seven years ago, eight years ago, so there's not a separate group of, a group of citizens that would fill those positions. So it's, it's not like you're going to go out and grab somebody else. And I look at it this way, is?
If I'm elected mayor, I will have, I'll have the planning commission appointments reviewed, is my inspiration for this. I'm trying to be very civil and respectful, but I'll have them reviewed in the event that I win on November 5th.
I will, go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
So they've been vetted, they've been recommended by the mayor, and there's no issue with either one of these candidates, is that correct? Am I hearing that correct? And I'm sorry, I have time here.
They're both qualified.
So they're both qualified, and so the issue is that you weren't tweeted?
I think.
And is that what, is that the issue?
I don't look the words in your mouth, so.
I'm trying to figure out what the issue is.
My, I don't have any issues with the candidates, par say. I knew four different people that applied for those positions. They were different demographics, and not a single person, there were different demographics, and they're all of the spectrum of religion, nationality, everything. Not a single individual was selected from the four different members that I knew that had applied for those positions, and one of the individuals was actually a 30 to 35-year senior engineer, and wasn't selected for one of the positions, when one of the younger members that was selected, I just, as I mentioned, it's not a personal thing, I think it, it should be, I believe it should be reviewed. We have a $500 million project on the line, not on the line, I don't mean that by any sense, but we should be more diligent and transparent about what our city's doing on behalf of our citizens with a project that will literally double the size of our cities. 500 and something million right now, after this project goes through, will be a billion-dollar city. And I just think that we should have people that are learned and astute enough to be able to advise us among these particular situations. That's all I ask for, you know?
So there is an issue with these candidates?
Not the candidates in particular, I believe, just the way that it was, I think the research process. And I, I'm not saying I have an issue with them in particular, I would just like to understand how it, the process works a little more thoroughly, and.
Well, I will take issue with the fact that the word transparent being used.
Yes.
There's nothing that's taking place in secret for planning commission meetings, for planning and zoning, so a person's actions on that meeting is going to be observed with every meeting that takes place, their actions will be. I know you said, well, you're, if you get elected mayor, but you're not mayor at the current time. Mr. Harrington is the mayor, and Jeff Harrington has, in his judgment, has selected and wants to appoint this person. I don't have an issue with that person. It is his, it is his obligation, and it's. I don't have an issue with that person, it is his, it is his obligation and it is his right to appoint the individual for that position.
It's his right?
So unless you have something that specifically is?
It's my duty as an elected official to do my job, to question things I see unfit and I have questions with, I don't believe, I believe that Mr. Mayor Harrington's judgment could have been tainted while he was making his decisions, and I don't believe that there was any due process, and the citizens had no way of having input on any of this, and I have several other documented incidents that I can go with this, but I'm, as I mentioned, I'm being respectful and holding, or I'm letting things go through the process the way that they need to rather than trying to be cantankerous or make this seem like a personal thing, I'm simply trying to do my job as I was elected by 200 some odd people that asked me to do it, and that's all I'm trying to do, it's not a personal vendetta against anybody, I just feel that with the current political climate, we should start questioning things.
Here's my only concern, is that I keep hearing these words of my job, and I don't mean to cause problems, but yet in the meantime, you have been kind of somewhat ambiguously kind of tainting a little bit the individual, without giving any details, you're saying, I don't know if this person should be on there, I don't trust Mayor Harrington's decision. There's, if you've got an issue, then you need to put that issue out there.
Okay, I filed a coma violation against yourself and Mayor Harrington for secret meetings that were being had.
Secret meetings, what?
For a commission that was set up that two years ago I was told was disbanded and no longer existed, on four separate incidences, I was told that the commission doesn't exist, didn't exist, and it was no longer used, and I, as I mentioned, out of protest, I didn't come to the meeting, because in two years, I've never been able to be on any form of appointment whatsoever, I've asked Harrington on several different instances, I would presume that my background, I don't have official education, but I've got over ten years' experience in construction, my family has over thirty-five years in the business, and I believe I have the connections and the experience to be at least an advisor on the Economic Development Task Force, and I'm not saying there's any propriety, but I don't have any way to find out, because I've tried to ask questions and I get shut down, so I'm doing my job as an elected official to try and be more civil and go about it the way that it should be, and as Mayor Harrington had informed some staff members that it was a task force, so you guys weren't involved.
Okay, I tell you what, let's stop here right there.
Okay.
We can discuss that, let's do that during council items.
Yes, sir.
Let's deal with what's on the table right now.
Yes, sir.
Is there any additional questions, concerns? If not, let's go ahead and call a vote on this item.
Shannon?
What are we voting on, would you please?
For the two appointments.
In favor of?
I thought there were three appointments.
No.
Yes, for the appointments.
Mackey?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gerly?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, on to the regular meeting agenda. We have, we need to extend the Kincaid IRB resolution of intent. Staff?
Ever McCallas, Assistant City Manager, I have before you upon the dais up there a resolution to extend the resolution of intent for Kincaid IRBs. We've sent, we typically issue these for one year, extended it for six months, and their, their six months is up today, I believe, so they're, they're needing a little bit more time to just wrap up construction, they've made great progress on, on the construction, I have no concerns that they'll get everything completed, this is just to allow them a little bit of extra time to, to get everything wrapped up, construction as much as I can, and get everything in mind for the bonds, so we hope to have this back before you next month for the actual ordinance to issue the IRBs. And Adrian Serene, QDA from this year, do you have any questions regarding the IRB process?
Thank you, Mrs. McCallas. Any, any comments from the public? If not, we will accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt a resolution extending the resolution of intent to issue IRBs through December 14, 2019.
Second. It's been moved in second, and the discussion will start over on this end. I've got nothing other than, I've noticed that the progress has really made leaps and bounds, I think we talked earlier and you didn't know a date yet, but it looks like they're getting close to opening the doors and utilizing the facilities, so.
I think that's right.
It's good to see, so. I guess we're ready for a vote then?
Gerly? Yes? Mackey?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up on the agenda is item number two, which is for some new entry sign design proposals, and staff, I assume that you missed the poll, can you?
Yes. We have an agreement or a proposal from Land Works Studio, they are the company that went through and did all of our parks master plan, so this would be kind of an extension from that, during the parks master planning, they looked at all of the parks entrances and kind of gave a lockout proposal for a parks entrance sign, so this would be an extension of that to make sure all of the welcome to Bonner Springs signs and wayfinding signage such as our distort downtown signs, all kind of match and have a new modern design, I've had developers and business owners and the tourism committee are all in support of freshening up these entrance signs and kind of bringing a new modern feel, especially with the new logo and kind of getting our brand out there. So this is to execute an agreement with Land Works Studio for the entry sign design and wayfinding, which would get us through all of the design process, including looking at all of the locations, where we need signage, designing all the signage, putting the construction package together, we bid that out, and then they would do the construction management to make sure it's going, the signs are installed as the contract ends.
That's it? Anybody from the audience like to comment on it? If not, I will accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize staff to execute an agreement with Land Works Studio for entry sign designed, designed not to exceed eighteen thousand for one hundred and eighty dollars.
I guess you got that second, you figured I'd do the give it to? And we'll start right next to me here, Mr. Wood.
I think it's a lovely idea to advertise city.
I also think it's a great idea, I'm happy to see that Bonner is being proactive.
Mr. Reeves?
Yeah, the only question, I think it's a great idea too, but I was a little confused, I guess, it looks like there's another plan for twenty thousand dollars for next year to continue this on, is that?
This is for the design, so the construction would be bid out separately. The twenty thousand dollars?
The signs will not be done this year, they'll be actually installed.
Right, this would, this would start the design process so that we could have installation of the signs next year.
Are we looking at anything off by sudden, coming in?
We could have something there, part of this process is to look at our current locations and where we may need some locations or where we could move to make them kind of fit better. They would look at the, the location, there's one from K-7 and State Avenue that's kind of up on the hill, and then there's a couple down here at K-7 and K-32, so yeah, part of, part of it would be kind of looking at.
Sort of be new places possibly?
Yeah, we could definitely have some new places, yeah.
Have all our pictures on it, is that right?
Probably not.
Tourism?
Ms. Gerly?
I wouldn't put mine on.
I just wondered about how long, or when we might expect this piece to be completed, I see a hundred and seventy-two hours, so by the end of the year maybe?
I, I would say that by the end of the year, they should have the, the design pretty, pretty good, and then right at the, they'd probably be working on construction documents by January timeframe, I would think.
And I think we, as we discussed earlier, this is strictly for the design and the construction documents, it would not actually involve, there will have to be a separate process that'll come forward to us to actually authorize the building of, and place none of these signs, correct?
Right, yeah, they would get the construction bidding documents for us so that we could bid out and have, choose, choose the company that will be actually installing the signs, constructing and installing.
Any further questions? If not, call for a vote.
Thompson?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gerly?
Yes?
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mrs. McCallas. Next on, that gives, now item number three, GSC project, change order request, everybody's favorite. Staff, press station.
Before you, you have a series of change orders, ten, twelve, fifteen, and eighteen, they're all detailed, but generally the gist of the change order requests are primarily for additional asbestos abatement, there's also a suggestion to do some waterproofing around the base of the 1918 building to help ensure that that is maintained over the long term, and then also some concrete that was not documented, and structural drawings when it went out for bid, that needs, we obviously would like to have some concrete flooring and not dirt, so with that being said, we have SFS and KBS folks here tonight to answer any questions from the council related to any of these change orders, all in all, I believe this amounts to a little over about eighty-two thousand dollars worth of additional work to be done, and also note, inside the memo that the total contingency line item that the city did plan for was ten percent of the project, which amounts to about 1.3 million dollars, so the good thing is we're not over budget with this at the moment, and I will note, you know, too, we're talking cheap there, but I will note as well that, and certainly KBS and SFS would hopefully share this sentiment, we're at a point right now, or especially within the 1918 building, that a lot of the unknown factor of that building has become known, there are a few other change orders that we are working through to determine whether or not they're warranted or not, but again, I guess the good thing that you know is that structurally the building has been found to be in very, very good shape, and hopefully we don't get anywhere near the 1.3 million that we have for our contingency lineup, so again, happy to answer any questions as well as SFS and KBS, should you have any specific questions about any of these change orders.
Anybody in the audience like to speak on this matter? If not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve a change order request, ten, twelve, fifteen, and eighteen, for the Government Service Center project in the amount not to exceed eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-one cents.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion in a second, we'll start with Ms. Gerly here.
No questions.
Mr. Kent?
When you do the contingency, does that include the purchase of the apartments?
That was not part of it, no.
And the water line, that's the next thing that we approve of, three hundred and some thousand, or?
Yep.
That was added in for that too, is that considered part of the contingency? I mean, we're, there are a lot of ancillary things that pop in here that we're blowing way through these numbers, so I mean, everybody keep those things in mind when we're doing all these things, that adds up really quick.
Go ahead, Mr. Kent. Okay, Mr. Reeves?
Just, change orders issue is one of my things. I'm concerned about the asbestos, I guess we need to get rid of the asbestos, but through all the discovery period we had, I would have thought that a good deal of this asbestos could have been discovered up front, is what I was hoping for initially, I've seen the asbestos when I walked through the building, I was pretty sure it was asbestos, so I would have thought that could have been discovered up front and would have been part of the initial bid procedure rather than waiting till now, and all of a sudden now we're getting under thirty-six thousand dollars on top, that's my concern there with the tunnel and with the boiler room, that's, it was there, you know, so, I, I went through the project before, but I'm, I'm just letting you know that this is the point where I'm, I'm not the happy camper.
Anything else, Mr. Reeves?
That's it.
Mr. Shannon? Mr. Mackey?
I'm most curious about the secret tunnel.
You don't know about the secret tunnel?
Hey, I was a little kid, I always wanted to know about secret tunnels, we finally got one, it's like, can we get some pictures of it or something?
Yeah. So the sidewalk between the old boiler room and the kidney center over here, courtyard, the top of that is the tunnel.
Oh, seriously?
So the boiler room that was on the backside of the building, fed this building back in 1960 or whenever this building was added on to, so there are steam lines, electrical lines, everything coming to here, actually Sean found out with us, and we discovered it. There's an access panel back here in the mechanical room, eighteen by eighteen inch hole that goes down, and we believe there's tunnels throughout this whole building for steam lines and mechanical.
Did we fill it in, or are we just, do you guess, tap in it?
Not yet, so, so the tunnel outside, the plan is to, so there's asbestos, there's pipe wrapped in asbestos insulation.
Correct.
That insulation is, is fallen on the ground.
Yep.
So everything on the ground is considered contained.
Oh, yeah.
So the plan is to cut open an access point through the sidewalk, or abatement contract we're going, and clean up everything, get rid of asbestos, we'll remove the sidewalk, remove the mechanical throughout the tunnel, remove the tunnel, break in both sides, waterproof, everything that needs to be done to secure moisture and everything from penetrating both buildings, and then great, we'll be filling it with dirt.
No more tunnel.
Is there a hate? Structural reason why we have to remove it?
Yeah, for site.
For what?
For site purposes.
We have a lot of infrastructure.
There's new electrical lines.
Perpetual to it.
That will go through that area, and then there's actually an elevation change there too, at a certain point.
Okay.
And you don't want a tunnel that can collect, you know, be a bathtub and collect water and lava.
A little tunnel pit inside.
You got plenty of tunnels on it.
Tunnels.
All right, thanks, gentlemen.
That's it?
No, sir.
Ms. Wood?
No.
Hey, I was, just like Mr. Mackey, I was curious about this tunnel, especially since it listed police facility site work, and that's what kind of threw me off, I'm thinking it was going underneath to the, to the police area.
So all the site work is on the police drawings, on the police facility drawings, so that's what threw me off. So any of the outside work, the dirt work, the driveways, is on the police, police facility drawings.
It's the way, it's the way the buckets of money for the project is sorted out, so police facility, all site work is in one bucket of money, so that's why.
That's why it's listed as.
It's listed.
Excellent, thank you for explaining that. Any other questions, concerns? If not, go please.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gerly?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and hopefully, as, have a add-on to this, the chairlift, are we looking good for, what, this week, next week?
I believe the plan is to have a lot of the preliminary work completed onsite over the next couple of days, throw up in for electric, things like that, and then for it to become active hopefully next week.
Maybe next week, so they'll be here Wednesday through Friday this week installing it?
Then we can start seeing that backside really start to go down.
Well, you won't be able to see it because it'll be.
That's off.
That's off.
You drive it around, you drive around the side streets, you see it. We have a couple drones now, but.
They have a limited battery, so it's not like it's going to be able to turn on a bit of it.
They have a time-lapse camera, does KBS or anybody do that, or is that?
I live.
That would be a change order.
You guys have been taking pictures.
So, yeah, I've been taking pictures on it on a daily basis. So, yeah, I've been taking pictures on it on a daily basis. So we don't have a live finished camera. I know we've done that on previous projects. We've hired a voltage contractor to provide a, I don't know if it was web-based or if it was just collecting the data. We put it into a website, but that's an option if you want to go down.
And I've said, I think, as Gurley said, there's probably costs associated with that.
I would be glad to come over here and point my camera over every day.
And we have, just so you all know, we have been trying to detail or document as best as we can. So we have actually flown the drone over this site, just to, again, take different pictures of the great changes. And I've made it somewhat of a whole thing to take pictures of the auditorium area as it's been sort of slow to develop. So at this point, it's all pretty much opened up. So it's, again, we'll have some pictures that I think just kind of tell the story of this project and how it's come forward from.
Yeah, you have more than enough pictures. Because the architects, we walk the site every two weeks and we take tons of pictures. There's, it's in their contract to take a progression of pictures. Put those out there, what's called social media, just for teaser.
Well, they did that for the high school building. They put it out there so often.
We can have a behind the green fence.
Yeah, we did have a blue fence for the high school.
I think we're finally getting to a point where the pictures are starting to make a little bit more sense, you know. Be sure to make, make sure there's a picture of the tunnel.
Well. I think it's time to move on. Let's go on to item number four, manhole replacement project. We have some change requests for that.
Keep your being everyone.
Franky Burke.
Public Works Director. Speaking of changes, wanted to finally drive the last nail in this manhole replacement project. Man, did we have, did we have the time with this one?
Should install it for nails?
There were a whole variety of issues related to just getting this project completed and all the logistics. It did turn out to be thirty thousand, six hundred and six dollars and eighty-five cents above what we thought it was gonna cost. But I am gonna stand before you with a straight face and say, it was a success. Nobody got hurt. We didn't have a bunch of raw sewage running down Kohl Avenue or any place it shouldn't have been. We were able to divert that ninety percent of that sewage strain and, and everything worked fine when it quit raining. And we got through some design errors and a whole variety of other things. So essentially, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm here to ask for a project change and plan of payment on the manhole replacement project in the amount of thirty thousand, six hundred and six dollars and eighty-five cents for additional work required on the project.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience who'd like to comment? This is getting pretty vacant there. If not, I will accept a motion.
Make a motion to approve a change request and final payment in the amount of thirty thousand dollar, thirty thousand, six hundred and six dollars and eighty-five cents and accept the project total of, again, eighty-one thousand dollars, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. Like, we're always on eighty-one thousand dollars.
Mr. Shannon, we'll start it down there with you. Questions?
How you handled that? But it wasn't too hard on, was it? Nothing.
Mr. Mackey?
Thank you guys for doing that. And also, thank you for your experience and being proactive with that and putting a, I guess, an emphasis on it and getting it done, even though it sucks to spend money, it's a good thing to be spending money wisely.
Thank you.
What were the design errors in that? What was?
The primary, there were a couple. But the primary design error was an elevation difference. And as we flushed it out later and found out why, it's because the surveyor, which was hired by Wilson, didn't want to get down in there because it was dangerous to be down in there. So I gotta appreciate some of that. So they gave it their best shot, but.
Did they give us a refund in that amount? Did they?
Actually, yeah, there was, there was some negotiating in five thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-five cents that they're not getting paid, but. Yes, there was some recognition on their part.
Yep.
That some of this was their problem. But the thing is, had they brought it up, we would have made other accommodations. We would have figured out a solution instead of planning out later when it was too late.
You gave a good description. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was curious what the refund was for, that's what.
It's not sexy, it's raw sewage. I mean, it's not a big deal. Most people.
Mr. Reeves?
Yeah, we just gotta keep this stuff running downhill, so.
Yeah.
That's right.
So should we add about an extra fifteen, twenty bucks to buy a pair of galoshes for individual from Wilson's? Okay, down there the next time.
He's probably worried about surviving the whole thing.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? If not, vote.
Gurley?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Onto item number five, Cedar Camp Waterline Project. I assume that it's back to you, Mr. Amar.
It is. So this is an important waterway connection. It really has two primary purposes. The first purpose is it's gonna connect, it's gonna connect a twelve-inch loop. This is sort of a vacant area between twelve-inch here, twelve-inch here, and in the middle it varies from four to six to eight, I think, in places. So this is gonna replace that with a twelve-inch and complete a system loop, which is very important. The other thing is, of course, it's gonna provide adequate fire flows to the new improvements with the police station and City Hall. Those are the two main things. So we had competitive bid, then we had all kinds of competition. We've got a recommendation here for the lowest of the best, which happens to be the contractor that's actually working on site. And that is a very good thing, so that you don't have one contractor conflicting with another contractor as they're starting to make the connections and pointing fingers at each other this way. There's only one. Only one to blame, only one to do the work, so. That's our recommendation.
Thank you. And I have to ask, anybody from the audience who's new to comment?
Wood, Reeves?
If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Uh, sorry, what do I?
What's that?
What?
Mr. President?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve a bid award for installation of a new waterline to kiss a construction in the amount of three hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars.
You have a motion in a second. Let's start over here with Mr. Reeves, this time.
Good question. No comments this time. I'll let this go.
Okay.
Let's make water better again.
That's it, I assume? Okay. Mr. Shannon, anything? Yeah, I need to get it taken care of and, unless there's any other questions, concerns? Vote please.
Reeves?
I was just gonna say, we're just a small city. I think the large cities, everything underneath is.
Now we do motion. About this.
Reeves?
Yes.
Yes.
Kip?
I said yes, hold on.
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes. She started over.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next part of this, Cedar Camp Waterline Project, the inspection contract.
Yes. And this, of course, is with Wilson and Company, with a not to exceed the amount of forty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. Unless we really get into some bad weather, I don't see it ever getting that far, but they've anticipated that in this particular estimate and proposal that they provided. So this is to provide construction, engineering services, inspection services for the Cedar Camp Waterline Project. I would ask for your approval or answer any questions.
Any comments from the audience? I keep looking at you, Tanee. Otherwise, I will accept a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve a professional services contract for constructing, for construction, engineering related to the installation of the new Cedar Camp Waterline to Wilson and Company in an amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
Choose one, for the point. We'll start with you, Mrs. Wood.
Yeah, question.
Mr. Mackey, is there any questions? And Mr. Reeves?
Was there a bid process on this?
No, there wasn't. Professional services, you don't, you don't bid. But generally, I'm going with them because of their experience in previous lines in the city. They, you know, of course, represent the city engineering services part of this as well.
Was there any site work? Anything with depth?
They actually did the design for the project, so.
Okay.
I expect not to find any problems.
I probably should have asked this with previous, so curiosity, but that twelve-inch loop, will that also supply, have they had issues with water pressure in the high-rise? And will this?
This will, this will certainly sustain and improve that. I don't know many.
I just didn't.
Pressure problems, but this will certainly help a lot of issues. A loop is always a good thing.
Okay.
We've got a few more areas we need.
I just didn't know if their demand, you know, if there's many units there. Didn't know for demand.
If they have a problem, I've never heard about it. This, this will do nothing but make it better.
Good to hear. Any other comments, questions? If not, vote, vote please.
Kip?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, appreciate it. Shannon, our last two items. I think these will apply quickly. Item number seven. Orders to adopt the standard traffic ordinance, twenty nineteen edition. Staff?
First break city clerk. We adopt these annually. The league puts out a standard traffic ordinance in the Uniform Public Defense Code. Our city attorney looks at it and gives his recommendations. And he recommended the same, same amendment that we have approved in the past to go after the government.
Any comments from the audience? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve ordinance to adopt Stent, the standard traffic ordinance, twenty nineteen edition.
Second.
Been moved in a second. We'll start with you, Mrs. Gurley.
Three big changes that we ought to be aware of with that.
Mr. Mackey?
I had, actually, three, four different people bring up a, I guess there was somebody that got pulled over for a rear taillight. And we, there's always two sides to every story, which I respect, but the people were mentioning, the person was trying to change it in a parking lot, still got a ticket. And my only request is that if we have situations like that, we could have compassion if possible. I'm not an officer and I understand that situations are difficult. So I just was asked to bring that up, so I thought I would bring it.
And the car wasn't moving?
The car was stopped. They were pulled over for the taillight.
Okay.
And the gentleman, as I was, it was conveyed to me, was trying to change the light in the parking lot, but they, they still got a ticket for it, which, as I said, I wasn't there. It was secondhand knowledge, but I was just passing it on.
Anything else? Mr. Mackey, anything else?
Oh, sorry, no, sir.
Mr. Thompson? Nothing here? Vote please then.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number eight on the agenda, regular agenda, orders to adopt the Uniform Public Defense Code, twenty nineteen edition. Staff presentation?
First break city here. Same thing, we, as municipalities, and we put out the Uniform Public Defense Code, and we choose to adopt or not adopt it, just the city attorney did look at it and approve it with the same amendment that's through this year's.
Anybody from the audience like to comment? This is the last time you're gonna get a chance to. If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve ordinance to adopt the Uniform Public Defense Code, twenty nineteen edition.
Second.
Second. Been moved in a second. We'll start down there with, you, Mr. Reeves?
Down here.
Okay.
Am I reading it, deleting the unlawful discharge of firearms?
Yeah. That's, we have barbed wire.
Recommendations for, we have our own.
Oh, okay. Well, do we have our own barbed wire, too?
We, I don't know what the specifics are of our ordinance. I know the city attorney goes through and makes sure that we believe things that would be constructed amongst the building.
Okay.
I'm not quite as worried about the barbed wire.
I was just.
You may worry about it if you're willing from the guy who shouldn't.
Kind of related, kind of not. At one point, we approved a zone, I'm not, I don't remember the details of what I've been approval, what it was the zoning and the application for, the archery range at one hundred and twenty-fourth and.
Over two.
And then property's not for sale. They've chosen to not go forward with that project?
That, is my understanding, or at least at that location.
Okay. Good question. No, I was just concerned about the barbed wire, because I had never been concerned about it before. It's like, you just cut a nail on your front yard.
Mr. Mackey?
No, sir.
I have nothing further to add, so vote please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Motion passes. Prison wire is okay.
Time for our city managers' report. Mr. Peterson?
Just a few items of note. We did allude to it earlier, just enjoy bringing it up. We did acquire the new drone. You follow the city state's webpage or rather its police. You can see that piece of equipment. It's rather impressive. I'll have to have them come in at some point and at least just show you guys what that is, because again, it is a very large, most of us think of little kit drones or even one that we've had previously. This is a BOSS unit. And again, at the same time, a very great piece of functional police equipment. All the bells and whistles are on it at this point. So again, just wanted to.
Have they used it officially?
I don't think they've used it in a quote-unquote official capacity. We have been deploying it just to try to ensure that we know how to use it. So it's, but again, it's.
I think we trained.
It does have some pretty sophisticated equipment on it. I believe the chief told me at one point they were, oh, just testing it. And the camera were able to shoot across the river and actually see the license plates of vehicles at the industrial park from this location.
I don't wanna crash that one.
There's another video that I saw that we actually had a police officer with the thermal running around. And we could see that individual. It's actually quite amusing to try to watch in high. But again, the neat thing, I don't remember, we talked about this, this was presented to you all initially, but it actually picks up their feet prints as they're moving as well. You see the texture on it. So again, it's a pretty neat piece of equipment, but again, very functional as well. Also, just want to allude, as was brought up earlier with Von Trent, that the library is actually having an event. October is Food for Fines Month. So any canned or boxed food out of any brand into the library will actually take a dollar off your fines. I think I've contributed quite a bit so far already in fines and in food. I think I've contributed quite a bit so far already in fines and in food. But all donations will be given to Von Trent at the conclusion of that event. And then lastly, there's been some conversation, I just want to get everybody up to speed. Our street program is slated to be bid out the fifteenth, so that will hopefully be coming back to the city council at their next regular meeting. There are a variety of different areas on that. Predominantly, you'll see work done in the area where we had Cornell Emerson Shidley Project that is finalizing. We also had in there repair onto Metro, which has been a topic of conversation as far as its current state affairs. It's not in good condition. There was some other thing that needed to get done, mainly some ditch work along the south side of that project. But again, that should all be coming to the council, and we are optimistically hopeful that we can get that all done for the asphalt plant to close for the year. But other than that, that will conclude my report.
Thanks, Mr. Council. I'll start over here with Mr. Shannon.
Nothing.
Okay. Ms. Reiki?
I just mentioned, democracy dies in silence. Remember, remember, the fifth of November.
Well, did you want to bring up the other issue that you, we kind of tabled earlier?
Yes, sir. I was just going to say, with my discovery process, you guys were not in violation of coma. I would like to state that we are, so Mr. Hannigan, I want that on the record at least. I don't have anything else other than that to bring up though.
Thank you.
Oh, has, um, there was a, an email sent out, I think, to everybody about the street, River View between Hundred and Ten, okay, did y'all see that? Okay, that's all I, I just, I'm, that's okay, I just found it.
Yeah, the only thing that I can say, we were doing some work along the review earlier today to add some work around along some of the drainage areas in that location. Unfortunately, the amount of rock that's required to actually fix that in a way that the city would be satisfied was something that we had to close that stretch down, and we will be finishing up that project hopefully tomorrow. So it's, again, an unfortunate situation, but again, we're hopeful that that will all be taken care of by tomorrow.
And I knew it would be. Is there anybody going to be responding? I don't know who, what ward that is.
That'd be Ward Four.
So will anybody respond, or?
I would assume staff.
Staff. I just think it's important to respond. That's all I have.
It's, I believe I received it, I think we all did at about six o'clock tonight, so...
Yeah, that came in late. I just wanted to see.
Yeah.
Good job. Thanks, Shannon.
Yep.
Ms. Reeves?
No, I'm glad that that's going to be dealt with.
Well, at least responded to.
Yeah, responded to.
Anything else?
No.
Can we get an update on the bats?
Ah. All I mean is close upon it. I believe, that's one of the things that we're still trying to work through with KBS is ultimately what to be done with that situation is our understanding, at least mine, and in talking or hearing from others who have talked with experts in this field, that the animals, whatever they are, will migrate or already have migrated. So what the intent would be to do is, and this was one of those change orders tonight, was to actually go in, do chimney stack, clean out sediment that has basically collected at the bottom. They do need to do some end fill in the mortar as well. The intent would be at some point before anybody would come back, any animal would come back to cap the top of that.
So they're going to be able to keep the smokestack? I know there was some discussion that might have to come down.
Yeah, and that was predominantly due to concerns about the condition of the smokestack. This was just one of those areas that wasn't very well reviewed, just because obviously it's a smokestack and it's difficult to go up there, especially in the interior part of it. But again, I think at this point, the intent and plan is to keep it, cap it, and maintain it for another hundred years.
Can they, can they have a signal in life for us?
That's where the dumpy aspect.
Those are future bats?
Yeah. I'll see if, I'll see what we can do.
You've got that change order.
So right now, we're adding a thousand.
Oh, yes. English teacher for the win.
Any update on the campus? Anything going on with that, or? We, Amber, I don't know if you want to give?
Sure, we're still in talks with the UGE to get an ever local agreement for the sewer piece of it. And then once that is solid and the letter of credit is turned in for the development agreement, then they can actually start breaking ground, which they hope to do, they hope to this month, but it'll probably be next month.
And they did purchase, and it's closed.
I, I think that's contingent upon all of the utilities finalizing.
I did buy my daughter a drone yesterday at Walmart, a Sharp Rimmel drone, so it wasn't quite the same price.
We can, no, talk to her, go ahead.
Yeah, we wrecked it yesterday. And I'm very impressed with your covered wagon store. I'm still processing that, so that is incredible. That is a great story.
Well, she didn't come up on the covered wagon, it was her mother, so...
Oh.
It was her mother.
She's not that old, Barry.
I thought they were retro. I thought they were retro. In fact, that was amazing.
I would like to say that working with her out at Sam Stur's problems, that she's wonderful about that, during money for BBW and things like that.
I can tell by her list of accomplishments that she's wonderful.
I want to be her when I grow up.
Ms. Reeves?
Thank you, Janine. Good to be here.
Council slash mayor, I guess that, I don't know what you call my section here. Well, quickly, the, you brought, I'm trying to remember what the item was that was brought up. It's, oh, the drone. That visibility, maybe we should make clear to people come January first, they might want to get animal licenses if their dogs are outside, because that drone's going to pick up what, pick out license or not, so... That kind of clutter, you pick out license plate over there.
Yeah. Make sure you put your greatest tag on.
Just might be a way to encourage people to get their animal license.
I've got eyes on it.
Also, Roger and myself, we attended the LKM meeting this afternoon, and one of the things I did want to mention is there is a big push for getting the word out for the twenty-twenty census. I know locally, we have Christina Brake, our city clerk, is on a group with Edwardsville and then also another one revolving UG to try to work out, I think, plans, ways of getting, encouraging people to make sure they fill out the census. And I think it's important from so many aspects, most of you already know that, that, one, it decides, not only it decides representatives, we have a number of representatives, we have at the federal level, it also is used to help draw state lines for our local, our state representatives, boundary lines, as well as we will be using that. The last, I think the last census, we did it in twenty thirteen, based on the twenty-ten census, drawing our ward boundaries. So it's used for the legislative purpose. It is also used, is important because of the dollar loss. If it is undercounted, there's a tremendous amount of dollars that will lost, looked at a state and a local level if we're undercounted. And last but not least, it's from a commerce position, because the businesses use that data tremendously to determine locations where they might want to put a, you know, a business, say, you know, subsidiary. And if we're undercounted, we may not pass muster with some of the businesses who have , we have population cutoffs.
Grocery stores.
Correct, so it's important to, that everybody, as we get closer to that, it'll be in March, April, that we all do our best effort to encourage everyone in our community to make sure they are counted. Last but not least, and we might ask Mr. Mackey to help us a little bit on this, because he might know for sure, the candidate forum is next Tuesday, October twenty-second. There's been a, I know originally they said six-thirty for the mayor's and then seven-thirty for school board, but they may be switching those times around, as well as initially I heard that it was going to be at the library, but now Christina had heard this afternoon, she, they believe it's going to be at the library now. I'm sorry, it was going to be at the Sunflower Room, but now it may be at the library, so we're trying to understand those details.
I honestly haven't heard any more from Jen. She asked if I would attend, and I haven't heard that one yet, so I need to reach out to her.
That's all you know is right now, so. So it will be the evening of Tuesday, October twenty-second. Just drive around, drive around the city, knock on a couple doors until you find it, so...
Candidate night at what time?
It's six-thirty for one of the groups and seven-thirty for the other.
If I get any information, I'll post it on Toeface, Mackey for Kansas is what I, or KS